I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, in the best of all with liberty and justice for all.
Father Ray, thank you for the opportunity to be here today to think, to plan and to brainstorm. We ask for your blessing as we do that in our own lives, also as an organization. Just ask you to help us to see the big picture in everything that we're doing. Amen.
I've been informed that Kathy won't be here this morning because Arnold's having another procedure, so you want to keep him in your thoughts and prayers? Kathy, approval of minutes from the last meeting. Any additions, corrections, deletions?
You know what a question I had asked tonight? We were follow-up. I thought we approved paying the whole.
I went back and watched the recording and you actually said, "We're paying it two years."
We're paying it two years instead of just paying this year.
Yep. I went back and listened to it, be sure.
All right. I'm going to go and motion approve the minutes.
So, Bob?
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve the meeting from last month. All those in favor? Opposed?
Okay, you're, uh, I think I'm right here.
There we go. Give Julie a chance to get her coat off.
We can either, there's Becky there for Becky first. We're a little ahead of time, but she's here, so.
Morning.
Good morning.
Becky, don't sit down.
I might want to get back. I don't have to.
Yeah.
Good morning.
Good morning. Just looking at $2,000 additional for overtime in our maintenance budget. When we did our budget, we put in what we normally do, which is us using comp time and then just paying out what we need at the end of the year. We weren't aware that comp time is going to disappear, so therefore we needed more of a budget than we had planned by this point.
Is that how much will that cover? Like, is that for the year or?
Yeah, and we have three different departments. We have the administration and then the operation mechanics and operators, and then the mechanics, the drivers and operators. This one doesn't normally do a lot of overtime. We have to have, we have to have someone on staff. The operators and maintenance, they tend to have more and they've got more in their budget, but that's in case we get called out for trees or anything like that in a storm.
Looking forward, is that enough to cover the rest of the year?
Should be. I mean, you know, we're in March. Normally, we don't use this much. He was called out on another instance that he normally wouldn't have been called out on, but they utilized him. As long as they utilize the maintenance and the operators, they should be fine.
I'm making motion to approve. Second, Brad and Rex. All those in favor of the additional appropriation for highway department?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, let's move on.
Yeah, I do that. Good morning. I just have a couple of resolutions. The first one is to formalize the vote that was previously taken by the county council for an appropriation for the parks department to do some repairs and improvements to parks and recreation department facilities, taking that money from ARPA. The, there was some issue with regards to all of the specific items that were being requested. Tony, do you remember the exact number? I think $339,000.
All together, pickleball court and.
Right.
Different things for parks and recs.
There were different things. When it went in front of the commissioners, there were some things that were involved with the initial request that commissioners did not approve initially, or they did approve, subject to having some kind of quote. So it was reduced accordingly for the reparations and the improvements and the pickleball court. So the sum that is being requested now is $227,790. That amount has been approved by the commissioner. So I do, it's, it's an adjustment from what was previously approved by the council, but if you do approve the slightly reduced amount for those repairs and improvements, this would be the resolution that needs to be passed.
So this is a new resolution? It's not an amendment to a resolution?
We never did actually sign that one, so this is not a new.
And I think we're on number four.
Four?
Do you see it? We need a motion?
I think it's number four.
We, we need a motion of that.
Yes.
They revised the amount as $227,000?
$227,790 from ARPA.
No, from the three.
It was 339.
339, okay.
Mm-hmm.
That's just the balance. Bill, make a second.
Fred and John, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? I have a question. I noticed that, that when the sheriff bought that scanner, we have about $22 left in that fund. Do those, do those dollars revert back to the?
What scanner are you talking about?
For the, for the entries to the courts.
Body scanners.
Body scanners.
Body scanners.
Oh, the.
I think it's $21.
If it was ARPA, the money's just still there.
Right.
And when we dedicate it to a specific cost, can we draw it back? Is that what we do?
It just stays in the ARPA.
It just stays in the ARPA funds. It has been allocated. We've got another resolution that actually addresses something in different funds. It's not being used.
Okay, so it's just a shift to.
Right.
Yeah, okay, thank you. That was a question that I had.
Okay. Well, we have a motion of second. Everybody, please.
Did we vote on that already?
I think we did, yeah.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
The second one I have is along the lines of what Dennis was just talking about. We actually have a number of ARPA funds, one of which was for payroll and covered benefits for county employees administering ARPA funds, and another one was for paying for legal consulting, technical and engineering services allocation. One of those funds is not being used at all, so it's just, or hardly at all. And the other one, as you may recall, had to be supplemented with an additional appropriation. So rather than having those two funds, having to ask for additional appropriations and talking to the auditor's office, it is their request to have those two funds combined into one single fund. So everything with regards to employees that are dedicated to ARPA fund administration and anything with regards to consulting, legal administration, engineering, that would all just come out of one fund. It is not changing any money. All it is, is taking two funds and making it just one.
It should be number five.
Number five. So that would be resolution number five.
Keep it busy.
So we need a motion of second if everybody wants to do that.
Need a motion of second to approve resolution 2023-5. Go move. Who is second? All those in favor of the resolution? Aye. Opposed?
Okay. Third and final one I have is something from the clerk's office. By statute, the fiscal body of Adam, of the county can establish a perpetuation fund, which we have done with resolution 2001-3. The VAR Association adopted a local rule that allows for the imposition of late fees in criminal cases, infractions and ordinance violation cases. However, that all is required by statute to go directly into the general fund. The clerks have requested that a separate fund be allocated and by statute, they can have 40% of the allocated late fees. So what they are asking for is this resolution to make it so that they can take 40% of the late fee, of the late fees as authorized by statute, keep those for themselves, the balance of it would, to go into their perpetuation fund, and the balance of it would go into the general fund. So if approved, proposing consideration of 2023-6, and that would be the setting up of the clerk being able to keep 40% of the late fees.
What's a total-ish of late fee?
I don't know that the late fees are, I don't know how much. Yeah, it would be, it would differ each month, but for some cases, I think it, it's $25, in some cases $10, in other cases. I think it depends on the case, to be honest with you, and the court has, I think, latitude to make determinations case by case on that, so I don't know.
It's not thousands of dollars a year? It's maybe a thousand or something?
It may be.
People are late.
Yeah. It, it might be a couple thousand dollars a year. I'm guessing the perpetuation fund is used largely for training, supplies, those kinds of things that they're allowed to use. So they're not asking for a lot. It just takes a little bit less off their budget line come budget time.
I don't have a problem with it, but I'm just curious. So what happens now?
It, it doesn't change the late fee amount. All it does is when the late.
How are we currently doing it?
It's just all going into the general fund. By statute, it all goes into the general fund.
I'll make a motion to fix up the 40%.
So I got done, Bob. All those in favor of the resolution for the clerk's perpetuation fund? Transfers?
Aye.
Opposed?
And that's all I have. Thank you.
I'm, I'm wondering, when we pass resolution for effectively establishing policy, what happens to these resolutions after they're?
They get scanned in, put in the resolution history.
And so how often do we refer to those? How often do we refer to those?
Anytime we need to look at them. We have them saved.
Right now, we don't have it for the resolutions, but we have a codification process that we're going through with all of the county ordinances.
Okay. And that's available to all public even?
It will be once it's completed, yes.
And what's your question? What, what, where are you getting?
Well, I'm gonna go to sleep tonight, hopefully, and wake up tomorrow morning. And a year from now, we'll, we remember this resolution transferring funds to the perpetuation, da-da-da-da-da, and all of the other resolutions that we make. I know we have a policy procedure manual, but I don't think I've ever gone back to look at a, at a policy by way of resolution establishment.
They're available anytime council wants to look at them. We have them in our.
And they're searchable.
How often does that come in conflict with what we actually do is another question that I have.
Well, it's not.
It's not, that's my point.
Part of my job is to, when issues come up and we need to establish different policies, is to go back and search the database on all of the resolutions to ensure that there is no conflict or if we need an amendatory resolution rather than a brand-new one. So generally, we're staying on top of that.
So that's a function of the attorneys?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That's a concern that I have. Anything else?
Nothing further, thank you.
Tony?
We already get the additional. We have a transfer in circuit court. You all should have gotten that, but it's an increase in overtime by 1,000, a decrease in transcripts of 1,000. That's the only transfer we have.
No room. Correct you second?
I think Bob did.
Moved and seconded to approve the transfer. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, and then we have the amended salary ordinance, and I believe these are all new hires. Is that correct, Shannon? These are all new hires, all right? Shannon, the tran, the salary ordinances are all three just new hires?
There's not any, they haven't hired, they haven't done the hiring process yet. They were put on the.
It's for the position, then?
There's other ones.
Okay. You got parking wreck office manager, jailer.
Jailer was just a change that they made, right? Oh, yeah, it was a, yeah, it's change in status. But parking wrecks have been hired. IT were just putting it on so that when they do hire someone, it's on the salary.
The salary had already been approved. They just haven't hired anybody to that position yet.
Motion to approve the amended salary ordinance?
Second. Fred and John?
Yeah.
All those in favor of the motion?
I know three of them first, then I'll send them around. Yours is the bottom right on me.
Shannon, do you know that, does IT, that technology director, is the new position we created last year?
Yeah, the technology director was budgeted in 2022 for 2023.
Have they?
And then we had a wage review in February. It came before you guys, you approved the 24-hour, and now we're just getting it on the salary. So we're ready to hire someone. It's already there.
That's why it's getting, is it out for?
No.
When is that going out?
We don't know yet. We're still waiting on the room downstairs to be finished. That's where the person's gonna go. So we don't want to hire someone until we have a space for them set up.
Okay. Thank you.
Tony?
Anything else?
All I have. Did you sign them all?
No, no, yeah.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and sort of pass them around. Don't forget to sign them before you leave.
Okay, well.
Unless you want to come visit me again.
I'm sorry.
Unless you want to come visit me again in the.
My luck, Elijah. I'll visit you. Come to that portion of our meeting time where we allow individuals to present matters to us. Ed, you have?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I was at my Indiana treasures conference last week, and we just so happened to talk a lot about banking and, and being secure in everything that we do, which the state board of accounts and DLGF has, does a good job in keeping us there. Well, that was a week ago, and then a lot of stuff happened over the weekend out west in California with the insolventcy of two different banks, Silicon Valley Bank and Signature Bank. And I wanted to, for you and the commissioners here today, I spent a big part of my day yesterday talking with executives from the four banks that we do business with here in Adams County, plus Trust Indiana down in Indianapolis, and plus my broker out of New York that we do business with. And I have.
Who are the four banks?
Four banks? First Bank of Burn, it would be First Merchants, Farmers and Merchants, and Flagstar. Okay. And then our broker is Stifel, is Mark Davidoff, is the managing director of Stifel Incorporated out of New York. We have, basically, as of March 1st, I have $29 million in our four banks, plus Trust Indiana, which is basically a bank down in Indianapolis run by the state. And then I have $11 million in 18 bonds and three CDs. So my outside investments for a total of 40 million, 40 and a half million dollars, roughly. And I was a little concerned with all the news that we saw on the, on the news, and I just wanted to double-check with everybody. We have a lot of built-in safety situations in Adams County and in the state of Indiana, but I, I needed to talk to people, person to person, and establish that. I told them I want reassurances from all of them. I have notes here, so I have to go through that. But Indiana not only has the, the FDIC, which governs any account up to $250,000, and that covers some of our accounts that are under $250,000. We have many accounts that are old enough. And Indiana has a thing built in. We've been under for some time. It's called the PDIF, Public Deposit Insurance Fund, which is an additional insurance that Indiana has that no other, not very few other states have. But we do have that in Indiana and through treasury throughout the state, and that covers anything over and above the $250,000. So we are very, very secure in our funds. None of it is going to fall into any kind of insolventcy. None of our banks, nor Trust Indiana, nor Stifel Incorporated, my broker in New York, none of them have any funds in either of these two banks.
So who's that, that above and beyond insurance you're talking about?
It's called, it's, it's out of Indiana, and it's called the Public Deposit Insurance Fund.
Is that a federal thing? A state?
It's state, it's a state that.
State of Indiana.
State of Indiana guarantees. And what it was for some time, each bank that was a part of this, which all four of our banks are, plus Trust Indiana, plus our brokerage, they had to pay 2% of the portfolio that they had over and above. They had to pay that for a lot of years, ended that to build up this fund. And, but in 1985, it was determined by the state legislature that they had plenty of money in there. They had over $400 million at that point, and they, they decided they didn't need anymore, so they actually did away with that 2% payment each year. So it is well, well, well-funded. They don't have any issues. Indiana does not have any issues. It's nice insurance things. One of the reasons, I think, Indiana financially isn't so much better in shape than some of our surrounding states. So I'm real happy to hear that. The only thing, and it's not a huge deal, but I have three CDs out for $3 million that all come to term this year.
Three million each?
No.
Or one, three, one million?
Three million, uh, in three CDs. And that's part of the 11 million in outside investments that I have. Those are covered up to the $250,000. We can, and Bob, please correct me if I, if I say anything wrong. These, these, we could, we could take them out, take a penalty, and there's an extra insurance that you could get called the ICS. And I'm not even sure what that means. But it's at a reduced rate that would allow us to get additional insurance on those. I talked to our banker out of Flagstar where we have those three, and he said he, the, he gave me the company line and he gave me his personal assurance that he did not feel that it was going to be an issue at this point. When they come to term later this year, if I would reinvest those in CDs again, which is an F at this point, depending on their rates, I could get them covered by ICS. It would be a slightly different rate, and I'm talking just a fraction of a percent less in the rate, but it's an added insurance that we can do.
You said this is at Flagstar? And Flagstar is part of this Indiana insurance?
Every bank that we do business with is part.
So why is it covered?
Because it, because it's a CD rather than a savings or checking account.
That, that PDIC is on demand accounts, so savings, checking. It's not on, on certificates.
He did not feel it was going to be an issue at all, but it is something down the road later this year that when those come to term, I will, I will deal with. And at this point, I just kind of want to say, I think a lot's gonna happen within the next couple of weeks with this whole situation. One banker said, "Don't be surprised if there's another bank, maybe two banks, that also go insolvent." Because these two banks that did, which was Silicon Valley Bank and Signature Bank, they both invested in very risky bonds, crypto code, C, startups, and, and they had their portfolio, portfolio set that way. They did not have a risk management officer on staff at their banks, which is just crazy. I mean, why would you do that? But it's California, so, so who knows? But one, one entity came and wanted to get their money because they heard that things were going, and then another one, and another one. And it was basically an old-fashioned run on the banks where everybody wanted their money. And just over the weekend, it, it only took about 48 hours, and they both collapsed. Now, the federal government came in and said, "Everybody's gonna be made whole," and the FDIC will make them whole pretty quickly on $250,000, but many of these investors had millions and millions of dollars invested in these banks. Silicon Valley Bank is the 16th largest bank in the U.S. They're huge. The country of Israel has billions of dollars in this bank because they're a technology-oriented company. They have a lot of stuff going. So they're in trouble. They'll get their money eventually, but it may take months and months and perhaps years to get it. And for a lot of companies, that instantly puts them in real trouble. But we are not in that shape, and that's what I needed to know. I'm sorry for all the other companies and concerns that, that are dealing with this, but it does not affect any of, any of the investments or any of the accounts that we have in Adams County. That's what I wanted to just portray to you today. So.
I have a question. Why would you choose a broker out of New York?
We have dealt with them for years. They have, they have a office in Indiana now, Fort Wayne. I don't know if you do that. But with a broker, you have to develop a personal relationship because you don't have, you, you, there's very little time to make a decision on a particular bond that may pop up. This gentleman that I've dealt with, he was on all eight years with Tom Kuperberg prior to me. He was on all eight years with Brett Smore prior to Tom, and he has done us a very, very good job. Through the highs and the lows, he's done us a very good job. I've got to know him well. I visited with him last week in person at my office, and there's just that trust issue right there. He can have his office in Indianapolis or Fort Wayne for that matter. It wouldn't matter. You're dealing with a person. And he just happens to have his office.
And you, you track the investment performance by way of fund investments?
I keep track of all the interest that comes in, yes, and, and we have done very, very well on interest, actually. I can. Last month, we brought in $55,000 in interest, and that is more than twice as much as the previous year. Just shy of $20,000. So far, year-to-date, we're at $145,959, so year-to-date in interest, and that is versus $46,000 the previous year. So we are nearly $100,000 better in interest this year in our investments than we were last year at the same time. It's gonna be a good year. Now, with everything that happened this last weekend, bank stocks are tumbling. In fact, I have one personal banker here in, in Decatur that said he's gonna take some of his own personal money and invest in some of this bank stock that has gone down. There's a couple banks, good banks, solid banks, but they're. There's a couple of banks, good banks, solid banks, but their bank stock has gone down 50%. And he's going to invest in some of that because he said, I can double my money in a year, you know? And, you know, some of that speculation, nobody has the big crystal ball, but he's going to invest in money. So as long as money moves, somebody's going to make some money. And we are in the position where we are making money on it. But I thought that everything that happened over the weekend, it's such a big deal, that I wanted to let all of you know that we are in very, very good shape. It does not affect Adams County whatsoever. Of course, we're keeping a close eye on everything. And if another bank or two goes down, we'll look at those banks too. But I thought it was, I wanted to do my due diligence because I personally needed to know. But I also needed you folks to know this as well.
That's good to know.
Nothing to vote on, I just want you to know I'm trying to do my second. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Stan, would you like to? Thank you, Ed.
Then just one more thing about the bonds versus the CDs. When we invest in CDs, I have to put bids out to all of our local banks for CDs. That's by state statute. We have to do that. On bonds, it's a different thing because the brokerage firms are registered with the DLGF. And this Stifel company that I do business with is already vetted and they're already okayed by the state. You don't have time, there'd be no way you'd have time to bid those out. And the state realizes this. So they basically pre-approved these to give the proper rates.
And we're not invested in any equities?
No, no, no. We have a very narrow focus. It's public bonds, school bonds, hospital bonds, that type of stuff. But we don't bid those bonds out. They just come up and you say yes or no.
Thanks for your input.
Thank you.
Very informative, how much money we're making. Stan, anything to report from commissioners you'd like to share?
Nothing in particular. We did have a meeting on the judicial facilities a couple of weeks ago. And John and Fred attended that. It was kind of a good work session, I thought. I don't know if you guys had any thoughts on that. But we're going to have another work session coming up here next week. We do have sale of our farm ground coming up on April 13. And that's going to be at Fairgrounds and the dining hall. It is at 6:30 p.m. So that's coming up.
Property values go down?
No, so we'd like you to go in and kind of start bidding on it soon. But no, I don't know. I mean, at this point, you know, we've got the current appraisals. And so we have, you know, a number set that has to be met. And so, you know, we'll hope for good results because it's good land.
Stan, I have 6 o'clock. I have a little 6:00.
Thanks for your good work. Tony?
I did want to just say quickly, next, the next meeting in April, Darren Bates of Dana Pit Stop will be here. The idea is not to go into a big lengthy thing. That would be another follow-up work-type session. What he's coming is to lay out what we have, what funds we have, who does what, the process of changing anything, just kind of laying all of that out for counsel. And of course, commissioners will be here as well.
Of course, who will? Who will be here as well?
The commissioners.
Oh, okay.
So they'll be able to hear what Darren is saying. I don't think he, the plan was not to have him come next month and go into a two- or three-hour thing on various possibilities. But just, he recently did this with Wells County and a couple of other area counties. So he's kind of going down the line. And he'll tell us where we're at with lit funds and all that stuff. So I just wanted to give you a heads up that he'll be here next month.
Is he going to send some material forward? Do we have something to look at?
Well, you can look at Dana Pit Stop anytime.
So one of the things that profit this, it's, you know, our public safety lid is trending downwards. We looked at it last Friday, and we had several years where, you know, we're bringing in, what was it? Between $500,000 and $600,000.
And although, over the course of time, with pay increases and everything else, it's.
That was over and above where we were needed to be. And now that it's trended down the last two years to the $300,000 mark or something like that, 250,000, 300. So it's just, it's something we need to, and Corey's been talking about this for a while, that we just need to be concerned with. And so we're looking at, you know, of course, we added a couple of deputies and that, increased wages, and just increased the cost of everything. We need to be able to fund that. And so we've been looking at our lit funds and just ways to, you know, be effective with those funds without raising any rates, so.
And John, Dana Pit Stop, you can Google that and click on Adams County, and you should be able to navigate that. And he has all that information out there that he'll be going over. But if you want to look at it ahead of time, that's on there.
Just one of the biggest challenges with all that is there's different things you can do, but there's restrictions on all of it. And all those restrictions are different. So, you know, we'll just have to be open-minded and creative when we look at that so we can, you know, take care of those issues.
We wanted to give you the heads up that next month, we'll be asking for what you guys want to propose of rate raises for 2024.
Well, we always do this time of year. But the idea is by the time we get to that Tuesday in September for the public hearing, that we have done the legwork before then to build the budgets and come up with an actual number that we want to advertise. It's hard.
So you guys will, next, in April, you guys will tell us what you're proposing for departments to turn in so that way we can get it around, get out to departments in by June. That's why we thought we'd give you guys a month to.
Is it possible to, is it possible to find out what other counties are thinking as well or not by then?
We tried to do that last year, and a lot of other counties were not having a conversation until like June, July. So it was kind of after us a little bit. But we can ask the question and see what everybody else says. And then if you want us to put together some numbers where you actually see that, like we did last year, we can do that too. We just kind of need to know next month what you want to look at.
It'd be nice to have an idea what other people are doing, I think.
I think last year when we asked earlier in the year, we got maybe like 12 responses. It wasn't a ton, but we did get some, yeah.
You know, and I think our budget workshop, Bree, is that between June 30th and August 15th? Somewhere in there?
I believe so.
That's when we have the budget workshop with DLGF. So the idea is to be working and counsel, meeting with departments ahead of that. And once, once we get an idea of what you want to look at for potential wage increases, they can build that into their budgets, send their budgets in, then they can be looked at. And if there are questions, you guys can ask them if there's somebody you want to come in. You can do that, and we can get some of that legwork out of the way.
And in the many talks we've had with DLGF, is budgets don't really start for like DLGF until like June. A lot of the important numbers that a state gives us don't get until later in the year. So this is kind of the starting of getting the numbers from the departments and. Just a heads up for next month, so we don't just walk in and say, hey, we need a number.
Yeah.
Well, we're not necessarily going to decide on that number next month, right?
Well, if you want them to get their budgets in.
Yeah, we can't tell the departments, hey, turn your budget in. They've always, it's always been, we do a letter and usually like we'll put the council minutes and say, okay, council's asking for you to put in a 2% raise on wages and leave all the other line items alone. Or I think the last couple of years, we've said whatever the raise amount was, and then do a realistic budget in your other line items. If you're overspending in a line item every year, don't just leave it the same, but do a realistic budget. So we need a target point of.
We always tell them that it depends, you know, that's not the final number. That is just what we're looking at. And the argument is always there that that's what they think they're going to get if we lower it. But we just have to live with that. Because that's always going to be the case.
Yeah, same problem every year.
It's never going to stop.
You have to advertise higher. So you can't say, leave your budget the same so they don't put it in because then we're not going to be high enough.
But I will say too, sorry to interrupt you, we did advertise higher last year, and we successfully did not offer that, that whole rate last year. I just want to point that out. So yes, I would assume that normally that's how it goes. But last year, we were successful in advertising higher than what we actually offered.
Well, and one of the things that we've been sort of brainstorming about is if we're kind of getting the cart before the horse here, if there's a different way to do it that would give us a little more freedom. For example, I think what we've been doing is we basically say, give us your wish list. Like, what's the most you could ever possibly want? We go and advertise that. Then after we've advertised, then we do the hard work of what do we actually want to do? But I think we've had some good conversations with the state, a couple of us have, that there really is no reason we couldn't flip that. Like, we could just do the hard work first, then advertise afterwards. That way, you don't have to get a number upfront. That way, we don't create any expectations that we don't need to have. So I don't, that's something I want to keep talking about over the next month or two, is if we just reverse that, we don't have that handicap anymore. You can do whatever you want.
So do you, so what do you want the departments to turn in? Like, if we do that, how do you want them to turn in?
I mean, I would, I would probably say, let's not even touch the raises part of it. So just have them submit what they want for everything else because we decide that anyways. So they give us the details, what's going on. We put that together. We, instead of having our budget session in September, we probably have that in August. And then you advertise right after that. That way, you're advertising what you intend. Because I don't know if you guys remember, there's quite a few conversations during budget time where we're like, shoot, we didn't advertise that one high enough, so now we're stuck with it. Or if we just wait till the end, then we can actually advertise what we intend. Bree?
I don't understand enough about the budget process with the DLGF and everybody like that. So I might be speaking out of turn. I understand the wish list part of it from the departments individually, but just keep in mind that we moved to a remote budget last year. So that means that if we don't ask them to put in increases for their payroll line item, that's going to come down to us actually doing all that math and putting everything in ourselves, which just takes us a step backwards from what we tried to implement last year. Just a thought.
Yeah, I just think whatever.
I know, like, a lot of departments say that too, like, oh, I know, I hear a lot from the departments that they feel like they're micromanaged at that point. You know, why are they, why are they even doing a budget if you're going to just do it? And she is right, it puts it back on us. If it's really non-schut-ated, then.
There's a chance that we're creating maybe extra limitations for ourselves. You know, when we say, here is an amount we think we want to give for raises, but we have no idea. I mean, at that point in the game, in April, there's no way we have any idea what are the rates going to be? What's the growth quotient going to be? What kind of income are people getting to produce income tax? Like, we don't know enough yet. So when you put that expectation, then you have to fight with it later. So, you know, if we can get more info, do more analysis, then create the expectation, you're just saving yourself a lot of headaches.
And I had a question, Ed. I had a question, Ed.
I'm sorry.
Our investments continue to grow.
Yes.
And right now, I'm looking at enough to fund two years of operations without, I mean, if we liquidated all of our investments by way of operations, we'd fund two years of operation without taking any tax money in, for example. But how much, how much money do we want to, is there a, is there a limit by way of which we want to limit how much we have in reserve? Or should we?
There is no limit. Should we? That's really more of a question for your board. It's better to have more in the piggy bank than you need rather than not have enough to do what you want to do. And I think it's prudent of me to take the money that we have and make as much as I can on it. But if it's to the point where it's too much, is there ever too much?
I think there is when it's taxpayer money because you're taking it out of the economy at that point.
I think one issue that we, this is my personal opinion. I've been looking into how property taxes are done and paid and collected, who does that, and all that stuff. Even though we're the body, I guess, in charge of that to some degree, or we're labeled in charge of it, I feel like we don't have a lot of control over it. The more and more I've learned about it, I mean, I feel like those funds are going to be collected almost no matter what. Each of the last two years, I've said in meetings that with the DLGF, that are a little discouraging because we don't, we don't really have much control. And so that's one of the reasons we're looking at lit funds to try to gain, have a little more control over what we do and maybe, you know, definitely not increase that stuff and maybe even look at ways to lower it if possible. But also, in our budgeting process, I think we got a good start on doing it last year, being a little more intentional about what we do. And so, you know, for example, we've got, we know we're going to have some judicial building facility issues. And, you know, there's probably going to be bonds associated to that. And so I think it behooves us to try to prepare for that as much as possible. So that means building up CUM funds for just that purpose. And so like last year, for example, we took all the spending out of the CUM court to try to save money in that for this upcoming thing. And we even took some money out of CUM cap as well. And hopefully, we can continue with that momentum, you know, going forward into this year's budget process. But, so I think preparing for that, and you know, someday, hopefully, the bonds that we pay now will go away. But obviously, we have the jail, but we do, you know, give a fair amount of money to the hospital, obviously. No reporting, but anyway. So I think that's what we're looking at. But, you know, we just want to control, try to be in control of what we can be. But if you've been in all the meetings with the DLGF that I have in the last couple of years, you'd see that, yeah, they're, no matter what, they're, they're taking it.
I agree with that. I think we sat in a lot of the same meetings, and it seems like the property tax rate, they're making it very difficult because they can't, they can't tell you what happens. What are the ramifications of not taking the full levy? And so my gut instinct is to say, well, let's, we got money, let's find out one year and see what happens. But I know that's probably not going to be something that other people are in agreement with. So an easier one to look at is that income tax. You know, we can calculate it a lot easier. It affects a lot less people, so it'd be a very easy number to play with. And I think I'm looking at next year, I think just from last year to this year, they're expecting an extra $400,000 in there just because people are making more than they made last year. So, you know, we've got room to try and offset some of the rising taxes on the property side, but the income side, I'd really like to look at that for the next, you know, couple of months and spend some time. But the income side, I'd really like to look at that over the next, you know, couple of months and spend some time brainstorming. So I've started that, but want to keep chatting with everybody and see what everybody thinks.
Well, thanks for your input. Tony, you had something else?
No.
Anything else to be brought before the body? Stan?
The only thing I was going to mention too, we're kind of looking at our budget. We've had a couple of meetings on the health insurance. So we're really looking at trying to, to improve the plan and trying to find ways to, to improve the cost. And Shannon and Mark have been real helpful, you know, as, as we kind of continue to look at that. Because that's what we expense the commission. Just want to let you know we're really working on it, trying to look at the best way to provide that.
Anything else to be brought before us this morning?
Just one last thing. Along the lines of the sale of the Golden Meadows property, I didn't realize that it was going to be this quickly. There had been discussion about setting that money aside, figuring out whether or not it could earn interest and getting with the auditor's office and SBOA. Yes, we can set up by ordinance, a home rule fund and transfer the money once it goes into general into a specific fund. However, the wording of the ordinance would have to specify how the money is going to be spent. So I just want to put a bug in your ear to start thinking about what the terms of the home rule fund, what the purpose of that money might be set aside for.
Is that something we would decide, the council would decide, or we would decide together?
I think it would be something that would need to be decided together. The home rule fund comes from the commissioners, but we're talking about a budgetary expense that would otherwise have to be appropriated. So I think it's appropriate that both parties come together and make that determination. I would suggest you make it a little on the broad side to give you some wiggle room to determine what kinds of things. I mean, it probably could be something as broad as for expenses related to a new courthouse or for expenses related to improve something or the other. But just some, I just wanted you all to give that some thought because with the money coming in post-sale as soon as probably this spring, it would be an ordinance that would be passed by the commissioners.
Would that be something that possibly could help us prepare, bring, bring to us?
Certainly, absolutely. I just wanted to put that out there so that I could get feedback and you all could have discussions as to what you think it should contain because like.
I know there was some discussion as far as whether to really tie that fund to this project. And I think someone in council, I mean, did it.
The other option was to put it in rainy day where council would have to vote on removing any of that from rainy day.
Right.
I think those are the two options that we.
Right, those are the two options.
Does it need a policy or ordinance from, to transfer from the sale to the CD and then from the CD out? Does there need to be two, I guess, or does it need to be one?
The sale, it has to go into county general.
Okay.
Right.
Then we have to have something to call it out.
Do once it gets to county general and whether or not it would retain its own interest or the interest would go back to county general as most accounts do unless it's specified otherwise in an ordinance. So those details need to be determined.
I guess to give you some direction, I guess what, right now I'm curious what council's thoughts are. Do you, do you want us to give it a specific direction? Are you still? Think with detail. Thinking that way, I guess to give Mark and Julie some direction. I'm curious how you.
I'd still like to see, to be specific and not even the judicial, just something so it's. Yeah, something definite.
Because as much direction I think as we could get Julie and Mark.
I would like to see it to the. Judicial, I mean, that's gonna, even if it's 10 years down the road, it's going to have to be dealt with eventually. I don't know if I want to get that specific, but I think definitely capital type specific and.
Capital improvements, just.
Well, as far as, I'm thinking more facility. I mean, people can get, you know, categorized capital improvements in a lot of different ways. And so, you know, frankly, I wouldn't want it to go towards, you know, buying computers or something like that. I would want it to go towards facilities. I mean, I think that's where our thought is right now. I just don't want to specifically say judicial because. I think you have to get more specific than facilities because that could go here to put. Maybe it does. I mean, I don't know, but. Something. It would still take it, you know, the vote to do it, but, you know, where you're, you're.
Because once you put it in the fund and designate that, council kind of loses their opportunity to veto that. So that's why I want you all to think about that. Because when you specify what a home rule fund is to be spent on, if something qualifies, it gets spent. It does not have to be appropriated again from council.
Ed, you wanted to comment on something?
I just did some preliminary work as far as the savings prior to putting it in the fund. But last month, CDs looked very favorable. This month, my bank account down in Trust, Indiana, Indianapolis has superseded that and they're paying 4.605 as of this morning. And that's a pretty good rate and that changes every day. But they are heads and shoulders above everybody else right now. And I can put that in a sub account of what I already have down there. It would take the interest and calculate the interest with just that amount in that sub account. And so you have a good idea. All the money goes to the general account. It's all one great big bucket. But I can keep track of what that money has accumulated in interest and, and that's more that goes to your fund at that point.
So, question. So you're, you're saying if we made this, made an account like that, we wouldn't then have to, when we decide to use it, vote and allocate it that way? That could be taken out by, at that point we lose all say?
Is that correct, Tony? Is that my, that's my understanding that once it's in an identified fund, that's what it's used for on the home rules funds?
It would still have to be budgeted, wouldn't it?
The home rule, so it would be paid into county general and then if you wanted to move it to the home rule fund, you would do the ordinance, setting up the home rule fund in, in the ordinance, it explains where the money came from and what it can be used for. And then like she said, we get to put in the ordinance if we want the interest to go to that fund or we want it to be there.
I got that. But what I was asking is, okay, we're saying what it can be used for, but then.
Council would appropriate the money to be used.
Have to be appropriated then taking it out, right?
Some of the discussion that you guys have had, and it was brought up also that maybe you didn't want to give it a specific direction as far as potentially using it towards operating costs. So if, if you take that home rule fund and define some parameters to that fund, allocate it towards facilities, it could still be broad enough if we had to go within courthouse or remodel courthouse or whatever. But yet it would not allow council to take that money and use it towards operating. So to me, that's kind of, I mean, you'd still have to appropriate it out of that fund within the parameters that you define.
Right.
Right. So it can only be used for those specific. We could write something in there to specifically reserve the opportunity for council or to require it. We can structure it, however. It's just home rule funds now. Basically, if you need that money, you send it to the auditor's office and they pay it out of the fund if there's money in that fund.
If it has to do with a building, structures, anything like that, that still is commissioners. Then they would come to council to lay out what, what their plan is, courthouse or whatever that may be. It is then up to council to say yes or no to that funding of whatever they.
So it works like normal?
Yeah.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
So the, just being super specific though, just saying judicial, I mean, this is before my time. But based on what I feel like I've heard is we were going down the judicial path 10 years ago or something, whenever it was, or maybe longer. I can't remember how long the jail's been there. But then we got diverted to the jail because the jail become, became much more immediate.
About seven or eight years ago.
So we just have to, you know, keep in mind, that could happen again. If we restrict ourselves that much, we could, you know, all of a sudden, that won't be available if we chose to use it. My only point.
Well, it's been under this discussion going forward. We keep those thoughts in mind as we get to budget and see where we go with it.
So Julie and Marie, how much time would you need because once that money is spoken in county general, it's not such a fun disappear. So I don't know what your timeframe is, but that would be.
It, it's not going to take months or anything like that. I can just get that done. I can start working on the skeletal draft of it. And as you give me more direction, we can make it more specific. So it can just sit in general, in county general or until a decision is made. But I can have a draft prepared for discussion at the April meeting.
So council would basically make the decision on the order since it's largest and basically would have to act out.
Right.
And it wouldn't be, the sale is after our next meeting too. So there'd be a, we have two months to set it essentially to get something looked out. Which isn't a long time, but.
Any other matters to be brought before us? I'll ask for.
Well, I guess, yeah. Just to follow up on this with all the council, we should probably talk amongst ourselves in the next month and have some sort of idea so we can have a plan in place and not wait until the April or May and then really start digging into it. So.
I agree.
Just.
Just be careful. Don't, don't violate the open door rules with.
Right. Separately.
I'll send you out drafts of what I have so you can give me feedback and I can catalog all the comments and questions so that we're not violating everything. But I'll keep track of everything everyone says. That may help.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be great.
But if you want to have some kind of joint session to discuss it, let me know and I'll have Brooke help organize a good date for everyone.
Call for a motion to adjourn then?
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor? Have a good day.
Thank you. You too.